Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Zoom meeting for the planning commission. So before I begin to the whole agenda, I told the following student of the meeting. We'll start with item number one, which is the pledge of allegiance. So if everybody please stand. Right, begin.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Time of two, which is the official call to order. So speaking officially from the order at seven oh one. We'll begin the roll call first before diving into the roll call of commissioners. I want to point out and acknowledge this team grant, who is our city planner, is not able to be with us physically this evening, but will be joining us via Zoom conversation so that he can explain the item which will be presented later on in the agenda. So with that, most tend to the roll call of the commission. Mr. Clement.
Uh, here.
Mr. Couch.
Here.
Mr. Edgar.
Here.
Mr. Me.
Here.
Mr. Franklin.
Here.
Then well, the record also indicate that Commissioner Day is here himself and it refers is after this evening. Thank you. That takes us to item three, which is the public comment. So the public comment will be in accordance with the attached policy. This time is reserved for members of the audience to address the planning commission on items of interest that are not on the agenda and are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the commission. It is recommended the speakers limit their comments to three minutes each. And it requests that no comments be made during this period on items on the agenda. The commission is prohibited by law from taking any action on matters discussed that are not on the agenda. Prior to addressing the commission, any handouts for commission will be provided to the commission secretary for distribution to the commission and appropriate staff. The public will have an opportunity to comment on items on the agenda. No one side of has been called in the chair, open side to the public. So at this point in time, is there any public comment? See none of the gallery, no emails or? Right. We'll move aside of four, which is approval of minutes from the regular meeting of April eleventh, twenty twenty two. While the commissioners had opportunity to review the minutes. All right, so I'll entertain a motion at this time.
Mr. Chair, if there isn't any other discussion by fellow commissioners, I move that we approve the minutes for April eleven, twenty twenty two.
I still have a motion by Mr. Clement. There's a second.
I'll second.
Yeah, I have a second from Commissioner Estegun. Roll call vote, Mr. Clement.
Hi.
Mr. Estegun.
Hi.
Mr. Couch.
Hi.
Mr. Me.
Um, I'm staying.
Mr. Franklin.
All right.
I vote I as well. Okay, then that takes us to item five, which is a public hearing item. So just a bit of a brief detail is the review of tentative parcel map number twenty twenty two dash zero one request by Wellsona Partners LLC. Mr. John Peterson being the agent to redivide approximately nine acres of seven parcels resulting in the abandonment of Venture Place as a public right of way located on the west side of Commerce Way at Venture Place within the city of La Mora. A P N's zero two four dash zero four zero zero dash zero zero two through zero two four dash four zero zero dash zero zero nine. Project is categorically exempt from the requirements of the California Environmental Quality Act, otherwise known as SEQA per section one, five, three, one, five, past fifteen minor land issues. Right, so Mr. Brand, we got you, we got you on the line.
Yeah, thank you, Chairman. Can you hear me?
Uh, yes.
Okay, this is Steve Brandt. So this tentative parcel map, as you've introduced it, is a request by Wellsona Partners. Basically, the purpose of the parcel map is to take the, the, the public street of Venture Place and turn it into a private street that would be owned and managed and maintained by the, the Wellsona Partners and the property owners that are along that cul-de-sac. So there's, there's really two ways. We, we, we studied this ahead of time. There's, there's two ways to pull this off, if you will. One way is through the abandonment process. And then the other way is through doing a, a, a new parcel map that overlays the top of it and creates the, the public street as a parcel. And after looking at it, we determined that the, the parcel map process would be the most appropriate in this situation. And so that's what they have applied for. So you can see in the staff report, this site has some history. This was a former redevelopment agency site that the city did the initial subdivision to create the, the lots in twenty fourteen. The Wellsona Group purchased all but one of the parcels and is using it for, and then they, they got approval for a major cyclone review in twenty twenty for a cannabis processing facility, which is, which is, uh, under construction and I believe some of it is, is operating. Then in twenty twenty one, uh, there was a minor change. The planning commission approved a revision to the perimeter block wall to be replaced with chain link fences. So now what, what the effect of this parcel map change would do, it would make the, the street a private and also provide additional parking along the street. Side, the
You're breaking up a little bit. Having some glitches.
Can you hear me?
Now we can, yeah.
Okay. The, the proposed conditions would ensure that the city still has access to the utility lines, access to the site in case of emergencies for emergency vehicles and 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 it requires that the owners create a property owners association that can be responsible for maintaining the, the street, the physical, the street, the pavement and everything. So staff has recommended approval with the findings and conditions that are in your staff report and resolution. So be open for any questions.
So the item is a proposal period, but before going into the public hearing, are there any questions from the commissioner at this time?
Yeah, who? Whose lot is that on the upper right? So that'd be the northeast corner.
Lot number one.
Yeah, lot number one. Who's, who's lot is that?
That lot is owned by Bennett and Bennett.
Okay.
They're using it for storage. And so the conditions allow them to have access to that property from Venture Place on the, on the east.
So this is a piece you're looking at, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yep.
And so that, the other parcels though, two through seven are, are owned by Wellsona. That was my first question. Like if, if they already owned all the parcels, then why, like, why did they need it to be divided? But being as a lot number one is owned by another owner, that makes a lot more sense. All right. Is there any other questions or comments from the commission before taking us to public, uh, public hearing? Okay, so the time is now seven eleven. At this point, I'll open this item up for public hearing. If there's anybody from the public who would like to wish or would like to speak directly on this item?
Hi, good afternoon. Name is Renee Gonzalez, coming on behalf of Gar Bennett. So we had a letter telling us that they were gonna do a public straight, uh, street into a private. And we basically, like the gentleman was saying, we do, uh, have that lot for storage. We park our equipment there. We currently have one exit to the east. And I guess the only question I have is, uh, once it becomes private, so we won't be able to exit on this, on the south side of that lot. Is that correct? Or could we have an easement in case something like that happens?
So before I ask for, for comment regarding that particular question, let me find out if there's, if there's any other public comment or comments for the side. Thanks, sir. Are there any other comments from the book?
So did you hear this question? So or because we can't? Is there anybody on Zoom that would like to speak during the public hearing?
Yes, my name is Elisa Stewart. I'm here on behalf of Wellsona. It's my understanding that we have an agreement with Gar Bennett that they would have access as needed to the storage space that they need. Also, from the owner of the property, Tom Voorhees, we lease it. His preference would be to not have an owners association. There is only one tenant. It is Basecamp Cannabis Company. And we we don't see the need for an owners association, given that there's not multiple tenants to raise revenue from. We'll be taking care of the property from one tenant. We're fine with all of the other conditions, but that's our only query.
Is there any other public comments? Right beside? Did he know what he's going to say? Okay, so hearing seeing no comment for the public hearing, I will close the public hearing at seven fourteen. All right, so just for clarification, there was a question posed by a representative from Gar Bennett in regard to access within lot one as demonstrated on the parcel map, where Gar Bennett is currently utilizing that space as storage. And the access to that point comes on to the roadway question. So the question will, will they still have access to that space through that approach? And then a representative from Wellsona stated that, yes, indeed, that they would still have access, that that's part of an existing agreement. Is that correct?
Well, on the, on the map, it shows a hundred foot access easement for the benefit of lot one. So I'm assuming that that's what
That's it, right?
And so Mr. Gonzalez is, is that hundred foot access, is that big enough for you guys to get in and out your equipment?
Can we have the city planner on? Go ahead.
Hello, can you hear me? Yeah. Yeah. Okay, this is Steve. So for the first question, the Gar Bennett's property, there is a one hundred foot long access easement that would be on the, the Venture Place right directly west of Commerce Way. So all, all the area that would be, uh, that would not be gated in the future. So there, there is an access there if they ever want to, to utilize that from Venture Place. So it's one hundred feet wide, not, not the entire length of the property, but the, the most easterly one hundred feet. Uh, with regard to the question about the property owners association, the reason for that is because there, even though all the properties are currently owned by one person, there's, there's multiple properties there and there's nothing preventing. There's, there's nothing the city can do to stop the owner from selling to multiple property owners. And so we need to know that there's a mechanism in place in case that happens. Because we wouldn't want, you know, multiple property owners to not have any mechanism to, to share, to share that. So this is, this is really the only time we can require it.
All right, thanks, Steve.
Can I ask Steve a question? Steve, Steve, let, let's say that did happen. Oh, sorry, Steve. Let's say the parcels did get sold off individually. And, you know, we did create that properties owner association so that, that street would remain private. It wouldn't go back to being public?
Yeah, it would still remain private. It's just that if, if you set up a property owners association ahead of time, then whoever, when, whenever it's sold, if, if a property is sold, then, then they're automatically become a part of the property of association.
Okay.
So I have a question regarding, uh, item four on the recommendations. So the item states that the owner slash applicant should indicate writing whether existing sewer, water, and storm drain facilities at Venture Place will be the city public facilities or private facilities. How exactly does that negotiate with or hashed out?
We'll work that out. The public works director will negotiate that. Cause some of that depends on whether, depending on how that works out, they may need to put in a master meter if they're wanting to operate everything as one, as one area.
And then would that negotiation have to reoccur if new property owners came in and started buying up parcels within the, uh, that existing plan or the, the plan is proposed?
Well, yeah, so however, however, condition four plays out needs to be written into the property owners agreement. That's true.
Questions?
Yeah, I'd like clarification on the access egress to, to number one on the tentative parcel map that we see, that we all received here on the north corner of that lot to the east. It appears that's the access that is being used quite a bit just by the traffic wear. Okay, that's, and that's about a hundred feet as well. Okay, then the hundred foot right away, this listed here on the bottom part of that on the southern end, that's where the other hundred feet is on to Commerce, off of Commerce Way. Or is there still just one way in and out? So I only see one way in and out right now. Am I missing something?
I think currently there's only an exit that we can utilize.
Just on the east side, right?
See there's, uh, fence that we have a section of the lot. And in case we have come up to the other side and I come to that space, if we have storage, we can't cross that section. And that's what we're gonna need to come up on the south side.
And that will be right kind of at the apex where much Commerce Way is, just right down there in that corner.
Got it, Rick.
Well, that's, that's what I'm asking.
Yeah.
When I shows up here, this is how they're getting in and out.
I know, right? Right now, yes.
Yeah.
Do you guys have a gate on right there on the south side right now? Or you just want to have it be able to have these?
So currently, right now, there's only a gate on the east side. But because that lot is long and sometimes, um, we have large equipment and pipe that we store there. And it could be a time that might, might split that east and west. And on the west side is where I want to make sure that there's still an access if it's needed.
Farther west from what they're giving you now. Is that what you're saying?
Well, right now I was saying about a hundred feet. It's where I would, the exit will be, right?
Right.
From the corner.
Yeah.
Right. So if that's a hundred feet and that was a talk with the owner, the previous, you know, before, and that was agreed, that would be fine. But as long as there's an exit on the, on the west side, I'm sorry, south side
On the south.
West of Commerce Way.
Right, right there at the corner.
Yeah.
Okay.
It looks like if you were ever to use that south, you would have to do some work and put in it doesn't look like it's even right now ready for you to use. Is that correct? Like it just looks like there's some storage stuff and debris and stuff.
Yeah, what we have out there is just hose and pipe right now.
Yeah.
This is storage, but we, on the and the lot on the east side, we have all the, the cars and everything for the employees.
Yeah.
And then west of that, we have all the pipe.
Okay, so you're utilizing all of lot one right now?
We are.
All of it, okay.
But in case we need to store more pipe and everything, then it would be hard for truck drivers to turn and they might have to
Yeah.
use the west, uh, south side of it. And that's where my question is, can we still?
Yeah.
An access point at that.
So you, okay, your agreement to use lot one, is that, uh, like a, is it a lease? Is there a time limit on that or, and who's that agreement with right now?
So to be honest with you, I just, um, we received a letter and I'm the branch manager of that location. And they just asked me to come and see what was the, what was gonna happen there.
Yeah.
And I'm not sure when that agreement happened. I will have to contact the owner and find out if there was an agreement written or what was that? Not sure. We'll have an answer at this point.
Okay, so essentially, the one on the east side to Commerce Way would be the primary access egress. And the one on the south side, a hundred foot, uh, is almost, uh, what to be secondary and not the, the normal way in and out. Okay.
And you're basically just, you're looking ahead.
Sorry?
You're, you're looking ahead in the future.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. All right. That was my question.
So I, I do have some information regarding the agreement that was between the owner of Gar Bennett. My name is Elisa Stewart. My name is Elisa Stewart. So there was a letter that was drafted by Mr. Bennett on July sixth of twenty twenty one and submitted by Mr. Tyler Bennett in support of our efforts to get the road to be privatized. And that was submitted as part of this application was my understanding, and I believe that it is somewhere in your record. I also want to be clear regarding the homeowners or the owners association that Basecamp Cannabis has a forty year lease that's consistent with the forty year development agreement for use of the property. So there will only be one owner. It is very unlikely that during the course of that lease or the development agreement that there will be a change or multiple, you know, selling off of the parcels. We're not anticipating that at all since it is bound by a lease and a development agreement at this point.
So what I'm hearing is that, um, so there's an agreement between the two entities regarding that hundred feet of, of access to be able to enter and exit. Mr. Gergel stated that that hundred feet is sufficient enough for, for your entity to be able to utilize. That's a hundred feet's good. You don't need any more than that. Like that's acceptable for, for your purposes?
Yes.
So that's, that seems fairly kind of dry, right? Like we have both parties happy?
Yes.
Yeah. So I, I have one question about the easement. So I, I, I did see that they were talking about putting a gate up. So will the gate go on the west side of the easement or is it gonna go all the way up at Commerce Way?
No, it'll be behind the easement.
Okay. So then Gar Bennett will have total access to their property without having to worry about a gate there?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, any other questions or comments regarding the side? And if there's nothing else, I'll entertain a motion.
Before that, Mr. Gonzalez, everything sound good to you?
Yes.
The way to set up?
Yes, it does.
And for Alicia as well like that, uh, all those conditions there, that, that makes you happy as well?
She still has an issue with, uh, with the property owners agreement.
Yes, that's and, and I can represent that for number four, that we would be keeping the, the owners' interest and the applicant's interest is keeping those facilities to be public facilities. And of course, we'll provide access and I can provide that authority in writing.
Does, having that property owners agreement, does that, what kind of challenges does that cause? I mean, well, yeah, what kind of challenges does that cause you? I mean, because we're just trying to create something in case, in case something did happen to where those lots were sold off individually, we would still have that in place. Does that cause a lot of issues for you guys right now?
It's an, it's an additional expense for the owner to create that association. And since the Basecamp Cannabis Company is going to be maintaining the road and there is a development agreement and a lease that's consistent with the timeline of the development agreement, we don't anticipate that there would be a need for that type of association or that cost to the owner at this time. But in the event that a parcel is sold, then perhaps it would be, you know, a condition that would be if a parcel was sold, that the owners association should be created at that time. But we don't see that as an event that's going to happen in the near future. And I would prefer not to have an additional expense on the owner if it's not needed.
She's suggesting if, to have a condition, if a parcel sold, then to implement that? You guys, what do you guys think about that?
Well, Steve is saying that that's how they're gonna have to structure this. Is that correct? And not only that, I'll, I'll just, I'll just say, ma'am, you never know what tomorrow brings. I know we say in the near future, we don't foresee that happening. But just in front of this commission, a few months ago, they split a parcel. Um, and we did write down a building lot, a building wall. So I'm not, just a scenario would be something happens to the market conditions with the business that's going in and selling off one of the parcels might be a way to alleviate some of that expense. And it might happen in six months. So that's why I believe the city is saying that they need to set this up. And then we would be revisiting that soon. I, I know you're saying in the near future, we won't be seeing that, but we don't know what's gonna happen tomorrow. And, you know, Mr. Brand is saying this is how it's gonna have to be structured. You guys see what I'm saying about that?
Oh, definitely, definitely.
Yeah.
Exact same thing. Cause yeah, you, you just never know.
Yeah.
If we, if we knew, we'd be a lot better off than some people, but we don't, so.
Do we know how much an additional expense this is upon the owner? No, it might be minimal.
It would seem to me that this would function almost the same as a homeowners association. It's, it's for a similar purpose, it's for maintenance, upkeep, improvements of shared properties. I mean, they have a, a shared interest in that because of this becoming not a, a private right of way. And I, I really don't see what the issue is with that. It's, it's hard to know what it's going to cost at this point in time. I know, I have personal experience with an HOA, and if the road needs to be resurfaced, property owners will pay for that. That doesn't happen every day, it's not written in a contract what that dollar amount is, it's, it's a shared expense because of a shared interest. Am I missing something on that?
No, what I think what she's saying is they're going to have all the parcels anyways, so why set up that fund or why set it up if we're, they're going to take care of it anyways, but
Are they setting up a fund though?
Right, you're right, yeah.
I mean, I think.
And then if, what?
Share expenses.
Yeah, and for some reason, if a lot is sold off, that fund is already there, we don't have to go, they don't have to go later and go, oh, we don't have that money or whatever, so. Yeah.
Good evening, can I make a, a suggestion?
Antonio, please.
Yeah, my name is Antonio Colton T., I'm the land surveyor working on this map. It would be in the owner's interest, the moment that they decide to sell a lot to create some sort of an association to cover the cost, so the new owner would be part of it. I mean, at this point, being that this is a private road, I think in one ownership, there may be no reason for doing this. But the moment that they sell a lot, they, they will, because it's in their best interest to do so, to create this association for sharing the cost, to make sure everybody has, has a stake on it. And that's why I think if we can leave it out, as you know, Lisa mentioned, it would, it, it does make sense. Any owner who's going to want to cover his own interest, the moment he sells a lot, he creates a maintenance agreement with the road. And that's actually pretty common in rural communities.
That's a good point, it would be in the owner's interest to share that cost if a lot is sold.
Yeah, he's saying to wait till if they ever do sell the lot to set up that association, can we ask Steve why he's saying or recommending to do it immediately? Is he still? Yeah.
Yeah.
The reason I'm recommending to do it now is because now is where we know that it can, that we can require it because we can hold up the final map until we see that it's done. If we, if we, we could do it the other way, as, as, as the surveyor said, and and say, and have a condition that says he has to create one before any of the lots are sold, but we don't have a way of enforcing that.
Oh.
Get more lots or something. So if, if you want to rely on, on the proprietors, goodwill is going to take care of his best interests, we can do it that way. The, the way that we proposed it is the, is the safer way for the city.
Makes sense.
So to paraphrase, if we don't do it, if they don't do it now, we, sorry, no, we, they hope that it's done later, which they can enforce it if it's not done now.
Can I ask another question? Ask a question on the city?
You know, have the fun part of the initial negotiation. Back to that, condition number four, is it a, it would remain as a, as a public road or those services become public, so the city takes care of that, and then once parcels get sold, then they develop a DOA and then renegotiate, and then, then they set up the funds to take care of that, that road. But I think for, for the property owner, I think it's maybe a means of latitude to be able, you know, to, to assess the cost. I don't know if that's the case, but I guess I think that would be a strategic move on the property owners.
Can I ask another question? What is the interest in the city on the maintenance of a private road? We understand utilities, you know, you're going to maintain the utilities, but is it a private road?
Antonio, can you speak there?
Oh, sorry, what is the interest in the city into maintaining, into ensuring maintenance of a private road? If the road is not maintained, then the owner is going to have a problem using it. So I'm, I'm not sure, but it's not in the interest of the public, because public has no use for it, because it's private. So I'm, I'm kind of confused on why the city requires such a thing, I honestly haven't seen it before.
Make sure there's a mechanism to maintain the facility. It's, it's serving multiple parcels. You don't want to have to be the referee in the future between property owners who are fighting because their street is falling apart.
But that is private property, that's why I'm, I'm, I mean, I'm indifferent one way or the other, but in the past, I haven't seen our requirement as such, because being private property is not a city, shouldn't be a city concern.
I can answer that, I mean, the city has a concern, I'm not speaking for the city, but health and safety, we're talking fire trucks, it happens. If that road's not maintained, and it's also a blight issue, I mean, the city doesn't, I mean, yeah, we with multiple reasons, the city would have interest in a private road.
There is the, certain, the comments of the stakeholders, I'll bring it back to the commission for.
I think, I think they got, kind of got a point, I, I mean, what is the answer with the cities, they're, they're involved in a private roads. I mean, you got a point from a safety staff point, but I mean, it's private.
Um, there's a reason I see Steve saying that this needs to be set up, and the reason is just working for another city in the area. I've seen these problems come up down the road, and like he said, he used the word, you play referee. When you play referee, it costs the city money. Anytime a city official or anybody has to be involved, that's money that's being spent for them to deal with this. And then if city attorneys get involved, you know what I mean? I just, I don't know, you just never know, to me, that you never know what the future holds tomorrow. You know, so.
I agree with Commissioner Couch, you, you don't know what's going to happen tomorrow, and it, it could end up being costly for the city. And I would recommend that we adopt the resolution as is. I have a second to that motion.
So is that clearly?
I will, I will make a motion that we recommend that, to adopt resolution number 202206 to approve the tentative parcel map number 202202 in accordance with the findings and conditions in the resolution.
That's second from Commissioner V.
Yes.
Right, so we're back to the rule ball, Mr. Clint? Or I'm sorry, Mr. Gudolf?
Hi.
Mr. V?
Hi.
Mr. Clint?
Hi.
Mr. Couch?
Hi.
Mr. Franklin?
All right.
I vote I as well. So I carries, that takes us back to our agenda with item six for the director's report.
Good evening, commissioners, just a couple of things to update you on. You see a lot of roadwork going on on Bush Street right now between 19th and 19th and a half, or, you know, that should be done in about a month or so, we're working on that area. One of the big things going on right now is we've been, we've had several meetings with the governing body for the USA Olympic Wrestling and Boxing Program. The group I deal with actually runs the Olympic Training Program for Wrestling, and we are trying to locate a site just south of West Hills College to bring this to Lamoore. To date, we've talked to the base, we've talked to West Hills College, the governing body for the Olympics has already put in a $40 million grant for this project through FEMA, because first and foremost, it'll be an emergency shelter for Kings County, should we have a natural disaster, have a need to house people, that'll be the first and foremost purpose of this building, secondly, will be to train future Olympic wrestlers and boxers here, but they would bring in other programs behind it and work with synergies with the college, and it's a good compatible use for the military as well. So wrapping up some loose ends on that, we're trying to secure the ground right now. And then we also had the committee meet with the Kings County EDC, and there's some surf money coming out for, to help boost economies and things of that nature, so we're going to be submitting a joint application for some grant funding through the state as well. And then the hopes in this thing gets built is that it'll host about 40 events a year, 40 weekends a year, and they'll bring in basketball, track and field, all kinds of stuff, not just baseball, or not just wrestling and boxing. And they're also talking about doing 400 two-man dorm rooms that they would probably keep half of them for the, for the kid, or for the international athletes to use when they're in town. And then the other ones, they would, they're going to work a deal with potentially West Hills College to house some students there so they can get their international programs back up and running. So that's a big thing working on today, it's not a done deal by any means, but we do have support from both sides of the aisle on this, we've been meeting with, with, with our electives, and we have a, a plan with McCarthy next week, so I'm happy for that one. Talked to Helena Agribusiness, they should be submitting their plans by the end of this month for their site out there by La Prino. And then we have a, another company coming in, we're meeting with, Lamoore is one of three sites they're touring this Thursday in the state of California to potentially locate a new plant. That's all I got.
I have a couple of questions with the facility that you're talking about near West Hills College, is it on West Hills College property proposal?
No, we're trying to get the 70 acres directly south of the college.
That'd be between the college boundary and 198?
Yes, sir.
And would be.
On college jav, because the college.
College Avenue.
Is it college? Yeah, it'll be just south of the, no, it's not college, is it Peterson, what was that street over there, or is it a future road?
Well, the, the, the one, two.
Yeah, it's just directly south, there's access there, there's already utilities underground, so it'd just be directly south of the college.
Okay, with, with the college, I hear you're right, that they could utilize the facility as well?
Potentially, yeah, we're working on the synergies, we're trying to make this a win-win-win for everybody involved, so that, that's where, yeah, the college is, is on board so far.
Wow, 70 acres.
Another question related to that, is it a, it's a potentially, it's a, it's a funded project. What are the criteria for people to be able to say, yeah, like, there, there's potential need for a facility of that nature there?
But there's just needs all over right now, and there's funding available, so they're, they're taking a crack at it, I don't have all the specifics on that grant, that grant was, was submitted by the governing body of, of USA Olympic Wrestling, the city was not involved in that process, we were in talks and communications, and I had some, some input, and basically they want to know that, yes, that we're interested in something like that when they submitted the application, but I'm pretty excited if we can get this, get this through. It would, it would bring a lot of, a lot of business to Lamoore on the weekends, because typically right now, they hold, they hold events in Fresno at Cylinder Arena. They're one of the highest TOT generator of tax, tax dollars for those events, and for, if they have 1,400 wrestlers, they're bringing about 2.8 people with them. And they hold these events all the time.
So being, but being involved with West Hills College, as soon as the arena was built, we hosted the state Community College Wrestling Championships.
Yeah, they can put, they want to build the facility to, where it can have 15 wrestling mats going at one time. That's how many they can fit in Cylinder Arena, that's got the biggest footprint of a floor in the state, and it, it works very well.
So hotels, restaurants, everything in Lamoore would completely benefit from?
Yes, and I was at ICSC with one of our council members, Mayor Pro Tim Matthews, and we did have a chance to talk to a couple of restaurants and a couple of hotels, and if we can get this thing anchored, there's interest, and there's, there's already interest in another hotel to come to town, so this would really just solidify, solidify that need.
Wow. That all has to go south because of the wetlands to the west, right?
Yes, yes, and we're just, we wanted it out by the college, so we could go other areas, but we felt that was our, our best chance of impacting the west side and helping with growth out there and getting things going out there, because you got some of the housing coming on now. And some, some more interest in that multifamily project that was approved years ago that, that never went through, so I've got a couple developers looking at that again too, so on the west side is going to grow up pretty, pretty quick here, I believe. Get that, get that dream to fruition, finally, build enough community around the college.
How about ingress and egress, because now there's only that one road in and out, and you can't go west.
Right.
Because I remember we were having talks when I was still working there, and at one point, the talk was a road that would go where the train that used to go to Stratford.
Yes.
That goes under the freeway.
Yes, it would be, that's 21st.
Ingress, regress there, is that still possible?
That, that's not in this original submission, but with the housing going in, we have three roundabouts going in on the west side to help with traffic flows. Obviously, once we get through this, traffic studies will come out, but I've already been kind of laying the groundwork to get secondary access to the backside of the college, because we have some industrial, you know, businesses out there, and they use an hydro ammonia, and they're typically, we are, the, the path to get to the college is downwind of their big storage tank, so if we did have a leak, and, and these systems are very safe, but if you did have a leak, your only path into the college right now would be not accessible, so there's other reasons that I would want that secondary access as well.
Is there possibilities with commercial going in? If I remember correctly, to the north side of the college, there was talk one time of like a strip mall and such, this is a few years back, but.
Yeah, as part of the project going in, there is actually some commercial space, I said, like a gas station or some different things, and they're, they're working on that, that'll be one aspect of the project that they do, but first and foremost, they're starting with the houses, the single-family homes. Thank you for your time, thank you for what you do.
It sounds like an opportunity for the law.
It's a big one, so hopefully, we're, we talk three times a week, so.
Any, uh, DCs to when I go, you start to see some like solid pre-high school gardeners?
The big question right now is around the land, what can we get the land for, so I'm hoping to have an answer on land by Friday, and that'll really get the ball rolling, but that's, that's the big, the big outlier at this point.
Peterson.
And they're the ones that put in for the grant, was USA Wrestling or whatever, right?
Yes, they're governing body out of California.
Wow, okay, yes, excellent.
I think you're ready to answer a question of mine, you can't, or the, or the college currently ends on the west side, you can't go any farther west because of wetlands, Marsh Drive.
Yeah.
Marsh Drive, that's it, right?
Yeah, Marsh Drive is kind of where we have a, we have a resolution in place, we have an agreement with the military that we would not grow the city west of Marsh Drive.
Yeah, we have jets flying pretty low if that happens. Thanks.
Thank you.
That takes us to item seven, commission, missionary course of request. Any commissioners have anything to report or anything they would like to seek for, uh, the, the agenda items or consensus to, for staff to look into?
I just want to say, nice to see Commissioner Mead back in, back in action.
Second that.
Nice to be here.
Yeah, you know, same, you know, Commissioner V, you know, Ross, my dude right there, so happy to, to see him back in action and looking forward to it. So if there's no further, uh, requests or other comments or reports from the commission, we will call this meeting adjourned at 7:50.